Yeah, Victor.
Welcome, everyone. Abby or Mark wanna take over?
Yep. Sure can. Alright. Yeah, that's good. Okay, so welcome everyone to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, this is going to be a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. Uh, the session is being audio and video recorded. Please be advised that today we are also recording the video of the proceedings. We will not use a chat feature in this meeting. And to ensure sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Commissioners and staff will generally remain on mute, except when speaking or voting. This meeting is open to the public but is not a public hearing. Therefore, no members of the public may speak unless specifically invited to do so. For member of the public reads an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of the staff or the chair. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about this process, you may call our staff at eight six zero four 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 five eight one three after the meeting has ended. Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mark. Welcome, everyone. I'm gonna call to order, uh, the Sorry, the October eleventh meeting of Waterford Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we have four members, Vic, Ken, Karen, and myself. Tim Bledsoe is absent. Do we have, uh, Ken is, is, uh, I'm sorry, not Ken, is, um, Joe's not here?
Right.
And Bert's not here?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll just go with the four members.
That's right.
Uh, do we have, uh, item number two approval of September twentieth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes from September. Yes, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting minutes.
Motion made by Ken.
All second.
Seconded by Karen. All in favor approving the September twentieth meeting minutes? Hi.
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 They opposed. Okay, it's been accepted. Number three, application receipt. Do we have any?
We had no new applications for receipt.
Okay. Or Mark, I'm sorry about that. Item number four, administrative review. Uh, we're discussing the potential amendments regarding accessory dwelling units and the discussion of potential amendments regarding cannabis. Uh, why don't we take, uh, accessory dwelling units i- yeah, first in the order that they're on here because we have some people that are interested in that. Mark, you wanna take over for a second?
Sure, um, I had provided a memo to the commission for review regarding the proposed accessory dwelling unit uh, regulations. Uh, a couple of things that I wanted to point out is, uh, based on the last meeting of the commission on September sixth, uh, they had discussed some, uh, regulations, some, um, proposed language changes. Um, those I've incorporated into an amended amended regulation. Um, also, in addition to that, there were, there were some issues that I wanted to bring up, uh, with the commission for discussion. Um, and one of, well, of those, of those items that I, that I thought that the commission should be discussing relative to accessory dwelling units, um, our size, size of the unit, which was, which was, uh, lengthy discussion at the last meeting, uh, relative to that, uh, location of the structures on the property, uh, conversion of existing accessory buildings into, um, accessory dwelling units, and having more than one accessory dwelling unit um, um, on a parcel. Um, along with that, with that memo, uh, what I had pointed out is I had done some, some look into the town's assessor data and kind of give the commission a perspective uh, as to how many parcels we have in town, uh, how many are eligible for accessory dwelling units. Um, and relative to what the commission was discussing about size of the units based on parcel size, um, I had also broken those down, uh, by, by acreage of, uh, acreage categories that the commission had talked about. So in general, the, the town consists of, uh, ninety-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-four parcels. Um, that's all across Waterford. Uh, of those parcels, seven thousand one hundred and thirty-nine are eligible for accessory dwelling units. Uh, what that means that, that those are the parcels that are in the, in a lo- in a zone district that allows single-family dwellings uh, and they have existing single-family dwellings on the property. So, um, that's a, that's a pretty, pretty significant number of parcels that are, um, eligible. So with that in mind, what I had done then is relative to the size discussion uh, that the commission had, um, what I, what I gathered from the data as well is that of those seven thousand one hundred and thirty-nine units that are eligible across town, six thousand and nine hundred units, um, lot sizes are less than or equal to five acres. And that was one of the size cohorts that the, uh, that the commission had looked at relative to, um, uh, determining what the maximum size of an ADU could be. And, uh, by, by taking the, um, by taking the, the size that the commission wanted to go with, which was an ADU not exceeding thirty percent of the size of the principal structure or one thousand square feet, whichever was greater. Uh, we ended up with, uh, you know, about five thousand parcels out of the sixty-nine hundred uh, in which a thousand square feet would be uh, greater than fifty percent of the floor area of the principal building. Reason why I say fifty percent here is because accessory uses, accessory structures from a zoning perspective, um, usually are, are, are considered uses or structures that are no more than fifty percent of the size of the principal structure. Uh, so that is, that's, that's how zoning inter- has, has been interpreting accessory because, you know, remember and keep in mind, an accessory use or an accessory building is subordinate and incidental to a principal building. And, uh, along with that, current zoning regulations, uh, restrict the amount of accessory structures on a, um, on a parcel to no more than fifty percent of the building area of the main, of the main building. Um, so when I, when I went in, also took the commission's, uh, recommendations in breaking out larger parcels. And these were parcels that are either greater than or less than ten acres of which are ninety-two parcels in town that meet that category. Uh, and parcels that are greater than or equal to ten acres, you know, we're stepping up here, uh, there's approximately seventy-three parcels that meet, that meet that. Um, key here is that parcels on larger or, or accessory dwelling units on larger parcels, you've got a little bit more flexibility in terms of location. Um, obviously, just because of the, the size of the parcel itself. Um, so, uh, increasing, increasing the size from thirty percent to some other, other percentage, maximum size of the ADU relative to the building, to the principal building. Um, on a large parcel, you, you know, it may be appropriate to increase that from from, from the thirty percent, which, which is now kind of where we're gonna go with the smaller parcels to, uh, something larger. Uh, keeping in mind, the larger percentage relationship between the accessory in a principal building, you start to lose the accessory and subordinate um, and, and incidental component of being an accessory building. Uh, so just kind of, kind of keep that in mind as we go along. We can talk about size right now if you want to discuss that, or just keep on going with it.
What, why don't we, why don't we take e- each one individually? Why don't we go up with size? Anybody have any questions on the, or comments on the sizing of the, of the units? Ken, Karen, Vic, anybody? Okay, so if there's no comments on it, where does that, where does that leave us then, Mark, in the, in the proposal?
Well, well, what I could do is, is the commission came, uh, forward at the last meeting with, with like a fifty percent breakdown or, or, or a maximum size of fifty percent and, uh, even up to seventy percent. What I can do is take a look at that, uh, for you guys and, and, and uh, let's see how that would affect based on existing single-family houses that are now there. Um, you know, what we're looking at in terms of, um, of how large a, uh, um, how large an accessory and whether you guys are comfortable going that way.
Uh, what this boils down to a little bit is the greater or lesser language, right? The, the thirty percent of one thousand square feet. Right now, you have a draft that says with that, whichever is greater, so they get sort of that bump, which I think Mark is talking about in the fifty percent element or, or, you know, looking at that. Um, you know, more, more properties would qualify for larger accessory units um, versus the state language was, which has lesser. And I think that what we want to make sure is that the commission is clear on the impact of the differences in that language.
Okay, but so when, when we're talking about fifty percent, we're talking about three point three six point one point seven, changing to thirty to fifty.
Seven.
Right?
We look at three, three, six, one, seven. No, that stays, that stays at thirty. I think you guys want to stay with that one. Um, where we're gonna be changing, the percentage is gonna be on the largest, on the larger parcels.
Okay, so you're just, okay, so I, I, I guess I'm confused. I don't see fifty in here at all.
Right, because that was, that was actually taken out at the last meeting.
And moved to sixty-five and seventy-five, is that what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay, so, so I guess the que- the question for everyone is, is the, the sixty-five and seventy-five for the five to ten acres and the over ten acres and the thirty percent for the under five acres. Those are the three issues we gotta decide.
Great. Sorry, I have one quick question. I was trying to find the mute button when I, when you were asking if anybody had any questions. Um, looking at Mark's, um, comments, that last paragraph right before it gets into location, where it's talking about the if the accessory dwelling unit ends up exceeding the size of the principal building
Yep.
and that would make the accessory dwelling unit the principal building.
Correct.
How would that work with all of the setbacks? Uh, either with something in your notes, and it might be the next section here with location where if a house is set back pretty far from the road and the accessory dwelling unit is now becoming the principal, it could potentially be in front of the current principal. Is that? Am I reading that correctly?
Right.
I mean, this, this leads into that fifty percent thing where if, you know, the accessory is allowed to be bigger and the house is set back well beyond current setback requirements, it could be built in the front? Is that correct?
That's, yeah, and then actually what happens is if it's gonna end up being larger than the principal, now we're doing a switch. Okay, so now your accessory unit becomes your principal building. Okay, and, and the principal building becomes an accessory. So it's, now, now that's when you're incorporating the, the maximum square footage, whichever is greater component, okay, as opposed to maximum square footage, whichever is less.
Okay. And this would also require that there's no wetland and that there is an actual buildable area in that portion of the property.
Absolutely, uh, you know, it still needs, still needs to respect the setbacks as well, building coverage, everything else that's incorporated into, into the proposed rights.
Or, well, that's, that's Karen, that's for a new structure.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just trying to turn my head around the idea of like, you know, we talked about kind of the intent of the accessory dwelling and the intent is that it would be accessory and would be behind. But I'm wondering if, I, I, and I don't have the numbers in front of me about like how many properties we're actually talking about this applying to, but I'm just curious if this might become like a loophole that people can, uh, go do things and then we're gonna have to deal with it down the line um, when the neighbors get upset.
Well, I can certainly, I can, I can come up with some numbers, uh, in terms of, um, accessory structures that would be greater than the principal if they were to, if they were to max out to, uh, to the maximum square footage.
Well, yeah, if you have a, a stand, uh, some standard ranches are nine hundred and sixty square feet, so if you had a thousand, it would be bigger, but if we're gonna do a lesser standard, then the number's gotta be a lot higher than a thousand.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you're not gonna build a three hundred square foot, like, no. I mean.
Right, so with, so with the number, it can't be a thousand or, you know, thirty percent, whichever is lesser. It's gotta be thirty percent or some larger number. So which way wanna go? Do we wanna go greater or lesser? And then we gotta figure out the numbers.
I thought, Mark, in the last meeting, I don't know if it was you, Mark, or Abby, you said this has, the accessory is accessory to the principal and now we're talking about swapping the principal. And again, I kind of agree with what Karen was saying. It's gonna make, it's gonna make things a lot more complicated because now people, I think that is kind of a loophole you know, that people could, you know, use to, you know, if they have a, you know, i- i- you know, a little ranch, you know, a thousand square foot ranch and they wanna build a five thousand square foot, you know. I, I don't know.
I, I didn't, I didn't get the impression that Mark was saying that we would actually allow the swap. I think he was just saying it for example's sake, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I got it that it was in, in effect, it could be almost a swap because it would be bigger, but not that we were gonna allow that, right?
Right, I mean, I mean, the way, right, and the way the regulation is proposed is that it gives, uh, you know, it gives a property owner the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, okay. And that's why we need to figure out whether we wanna do less or greater and then the number. I think you just.
I just don't understand how you can swap the existing building to make that the accessory. I just, that doesn't make sense to me.
So I think, you know, it kind of comes back sort of what is, what is the commission's intent in this regulation? And is it to maximize residential uses of single-family home parcels to the, to the mag- you know, to, to really intensify or provide the rights to intensify? Or is it intended to, to truly provide an accessory outlet for those parcels that qualify? And no, not everybody. If you, if you've got a ti- you know, a small home today, you may not get, um, you know, for these, you know, five acres or, or less than five acre properties, you may not get, um, you know, the, the square footage that you would love to have, but you would get something. You could have an efficiency unit, you could have, um, you know, something, something there. And so you may, you know, you may say fifty percent or a thousand square feet, whichever is, uh, you know, whichever is less. And that still keeps that subordinate nature, but would give a thousand square foot home now an opportunity for, for five hundred square feet for that accessory unit. So there's, there's probably some playing with that, but I think, um, you know, what's written right now in the greater piece, I think what, what Mark has analyzed is there will be cases in which the regulation as it reads would allow for these accessory permits to come in and, and flip that primary accessory relationship, the principal accessory.
I guess, from my, from my perspective, I think, thank you for the clarification, Abby. The, um, I would want this, this accessory dwelling unit regulation to be the subordinate unit, not to be able to flip-flop the, the principal and accessory because exist, you know, I think that's kind of where I was always thinking. This is always something subordinate to the principal um, unit, so okay, I may be a misunderstanding, but I just, I, that's what I thought the intent was. And I mean, for lack of a better example, if you had an eight hundred or a thousand square foot home and you wanted to build an addition on the home, you could build an addition that wasn't an accessory dwelling unit. And then after you built the, the building, you could modify it to become or add to, I mean, there's other ways that they could go about making that, but it just the flip-flopping of, you know, accessory and, and, and primary, or I, I think that would be a bad way to go.
Okay, any other comments? I, I don't, I don't know that anybody disagrees with you, Ken. I, I, I thought it was just an, an example of what could happen, and that's why we're addressing it now. I, I don't think anybody was looking for that.
Oh, yeah, no, and I, and I, I'm not trying to, yeah, I wasn't, I'm just, the way I was reading it, just, I, I don't, I didn't see anything in the regulation that said that either. It just, when Karen pointed that out, it just kind of made me think a little more, that's all.
Yep.
The, the, the problem is we go lesser and we do that is if you have a five thousand square foot house, you're stuck with a thousand. So we have to figure out what that number is. So it's, so if you do lesser, it's gotta be thirty, you know, twenty-five hundred square feet or two thousand square feet or thirty percent, whichever is lesser. And it can't be.
Yeah, I agree with what, what you're thinking, wha- what you're saying, Greg. I just like, I, again, I'm up to debate on what, what that number is, but.
Well, so where do we wanna go?
It, it sounds like it might be a good idea for us to run a couple of different scenarios, playing with these numbers a little bit for you so that you can say, you know, if we use the following language, here's how many properties out of the sixty-nine hundred that are available, you know, would, would fall under a category, and here are sort of the average sizes of the homes. And Marcus started doing, running some of those numbers, and so they'll be ready to present at the next meeting. Um, but, but I think that's where we can kind of play with it and, and plug it in a little bit, um, so that as we're talking, we can say, okay, if we shifted this to sixty percent, what would that mean? Um, you know, I think for, I think you're right, the, I, I think the percentage piece, fifty percent sort of passes the, the upper limit, I think, of the sniff test for accessory. But what you wanna set that square footage as is, is something that we'll play with too. So we'll do sort of a thirty percent, um, we can do, you know, thirty percent of larger sizes, or we can, you know, do a, a fifty percent and mid-range sizes. So we'll, we'll get some scenarios and we'll come with some, a tool that we can use to just play with a little bit and, and show you what that means.
So what I'm thinking, I, I don't need to, personally, for me, I don't need to know how many units it affects. I need to know on a chart if it's a thousand square feet, a fifteen hundred, a two thousand, twenty-five hundred, three thousand, thirty-five hundred, four thousand, up to five thousand square feet house, what the regulation as proposed would allow that property to have.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That, to me, that makes more sense than, I don't care if it's two thousand houses that are affected or eight thousand houses that are affected. If it's eight thousand, great. If it's only two thousand, well, that's fine too, but what are they, what are the people who own these different sized houses gonna be able to do? Because that's the goal of it, is to allow them to be able to do something nice to be able to stay together. So that's what we have to figure out. In, in my opinion.
Yeah. So we'll have those, we'll have those numbers ready for the next discussion.
Okay, so that's for size. What about, uh, loc- location? Cause we have those issues that we talked about. I, I spoke to Abby last, over the last week about it, or, or, or actually, was it, was it even today? I don't even remember when it was, but it was something to do with, um, you know, waterfront homes and stuff where the houses are down toward the water and you have a huge front yard to the road. What do you do on places like that? Uh, or was it Mark? I, maybe I spoke to Mark, right?
Right, so, so the way, the way the proposed language now is, is that, is that the accessory structure needs to be uh, located behind the front wall of the house. The front wall, the way, the way lots are set up and, and the way that we interpret properties, the front wall of the house is the wall of the house that faces the street. Um, even though the house may be set up in designs that the front door may be considered to be on, let's say, for example, the waterside or in the back of the lot. Um, so what happens is, is that you have several lots, several, you have, there's a lot of lots in which in which the, the house is farther back and, uh, farther back from the street, where you have a large expanse of front yard. So the way the regulation proposed now, you wouldn't be able to locate um, accessory structure because it would be in the front, in front of the house. Um, I took a look at some other towns, uh, in what they were proposing, and pretty much all of them restricted the location of an accessory structure in the front, to the front yard setback uh, for the zone district. Or even, even if the house is set, is set farther back. One of the things that we would consider here is accessory buildings, um, would need to get approval as well for, from the design review board. So if the issue is how it's going to look in the front, uh, the design review board has, has the ability actually to, to, uh, uh, suggest for the zoning officer, who's the one ultimately signing off, um, what this should look like and whether or not, um, you know, you know, the, uh, proposal meets the architectural integrity of, 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 of the house. You know, another thing to consider is that currently, currently, we allow garages in front yards, in front of the house. Um, can't be any closer than the front yard setback for the zone district, just like any other accessory building. Uh, but we currently do allow garages in, in a front yard. So those are, those are issues and, you know, the commission can discuss that.
So that's next issue. Welcome, Bert. See you there. So did anybody have any comments on the location issue?
I mean, I, I guess initially I, I was kind of not thinking that way, but now that Mark explained it, I don't see an issue with it. I mean, the only, the only issue I would, the only issue, and I'm not sure if that's in location or the next topic, but regarding pre-existing non-conforming, you know, by, by adding height or doing like we had talked about, the other thing, I, I, I wouldn't, if, if it's not complying to the setbacks, then I wouldn't be in favor of it, but if there was an existing garage in the front yard, you know, and it met all the setbacks, I don't, I don't see an issue with it, but that's, that's my thought.
Yeah, what I was just focusing on at this, in this instance, is, uh, new construction.
Yeah, I, I still don't really have a, a, an issue. I know the regulation, I think the way it's written now is it's gotta be behind the principal structure, correct?
Behind the front line of the principal structure, that's right.
Okay.
Yep, and that was sort of a holdover from when the commission was having the opt-out discussions and, and sort of was looking at sort of the s- the smaller lot neighborhoods and what that might look like. But that didn't take into account some of the things that, that, you know, like Mark is talking about, the coastal properties or, or other properties that have other placement of, of main structures. I think, um, this, for perspective, the state statute, the way it was written, um, allows for new construction to meet, um, all of this, actually, any, any accessory to meet all of the, the setbacks required in the district, um, and does not have this provision of behind the front, the front of the house, um, you know, the, the locate, one of the peo- one of the reasons the commission had originally recommended opting out was to be able to have a discussion about appropriate location. Um, but as we have draft, as this draft exists today, our regulations would be more restrictive toward the location of accessory structures than state statute would be.
Well, what's the ability to, um, have the regulation be behind the front line of the house except for, um, you know, a special permit for something other than that? For the, for the special, for the special properties that have huge front yards. And then as long as it was in the character of the neighborhood, I think it would, you know, personally to me, it'd be fine, but I don't know that you can do a cart bonch one, but, but you could do, and I wouldn't want to restrict it either. It's almost like a case-by-case basis on it.
Right, so you would, you would have the general standard, um, that I think there is a permitting by special permit, what would potentially sort of be a variance of the underlying standard. I think we want to play around with that language a little bit and just be careful about process there, um, so we can, we can play with that a little bit, or you could say that any, you know, a, an accessory dwelling unit is permissible in, you know, in any side or rear yard, however, a special permit is required for any front yard. So you're not treating different properties differently in the district. So we're trying to create one review format for, um, for location without treating individual properties in the same districts or under the same regulation differently.
Yeah, I, but I think we can do it.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can play with that language if we, if we wanted to go there.
I was, any comments on that? If we, if we try to accommodate that issue?
I, I think that makes sense. I can think of a bunch of properties near where we live that have that same coastal problem where the houses are set down by the river and, you know, their driveway is quite long, so I think there are more properties than we realize that will be affected by this, and it would be good to have a path for people as long as it's set out with, you know, the setbacks and everything. I don't have a problem with it.
Mark, you, you seem like you have a comment.
No, no, I'm just, because, because I know, I know what Karen was saying, you know, as far as we're finding a lot of parcels that are like that, so, yeah.
Yeah, we'll give my path forward. That was perfect, Karen. Okay, path forward. Um, is that it on location? Anybody else have anything on location? Okay, how about, uh, conversion of existing accessory buildings?
Right, so. Right, so um, you have an exist, where, where we have existing accessory buildings such as garages um, that, that were constructed to different setback standards than a principal structure, which is allowed by the, by the zoning regulations. They're allowed to be constructed closer to a property line than a, than a principal, than a, than a house. Now, when you're converting that structure into an accessory dwelling unit where the proposed regulations state that uh, you know, accessory dwelling unit needs, needs to respect the setbacks where a principal structure, you're now creating a non-conforming situation relative to the accessory dwelling unit being, being closer than what's, than what's allowed. And that doesn't even touch upon the fact that it's still going to need building permits to be able to even, even make it a livable, a livable building um for that, but in those instances where there's accessory structures that are closer, that may be used currently as a garage or, or in some cases, a boathouse even. You know, you know, how, what, you know, how does the commission want to approach these conversions on existing structures that will not comply with the proposed language in the regulations in terms of setbacks?
Well, we discussed this briefly at the last meeting, right, about garages that are on property lines, et cetera?
Right, right, so.
Just to, to start the discussion, I mean, I don't have a problem with converting garages that don't necessarily meet the setbacks if they're already pre-existing. As long as, you know, and I was thinking about, as long as the entrance and exits are into the yard as opposed to toward the neighbors, um, for that, I, I'd hate to have all these garages here and not be able to convert them.
But I, I would go, I would agree with what you're saying, Greg, and I would say as long as they don't change like the roof lines or the actual, or add any more to the non-conformity. Like if it was a two-car garage that was, you know, ten feet from the property line on all sides or whatever. But as long as they stay within the footprint and don't change the footprint or the elevation, I, I, I mean, I don't see why you couldn't do that, but I, I'm, I mean, I just don't want to increase any non-conformities. That's the, the way I don't want, I don't want to see that happen.
Well, I think this done letter is interesting for their down at the bottom with the, they talk about the distance between the non-conforming to the abutting property. You know, if you're down in the um the Great Neck area, there, there are some garages that are like right on the lines, but they're away from the neighbor's house. They just happen to be on the line. As you said, Greg, by moving the doors so that they're into the property and not alongside the other neighbors, I could see where that would be okay. I think we just want to be careful because some of these existing non-conforming structures are not going to meet current setbacks. And like you said, Greg, I think it would be great for people to, to utilize that space, but I, I think we want to be careful about um, a blanket, just, okay, yeah, you can do whatever, um, before we proceed. I think there should be some kind of extra step involved when we're dealing with non-conforming.
We can, we can think through what that, that might look like. The, um, the thing to think about with the non-conformity is the footprint of the building can't change, but they may have the ability to go up if they are in the floodplain specifically. That's, that's really what we've been looking at as where these, this issue will probably come, you know, sort of be, be seen the most frequently. And so if our regulations allow for height to be measured um in compliance, in conformance with the zoning regulations from um the base flood elevation, you know, plus one, then, then you've got sort of this, you know, several foot bump that you get um and can still raise that non-conforming structure and not add to the non-conformity. You could potentially go up and still be compliant with the regulations. So that's something to think about. Um, and also, you know, again, going back to the consistency thing of, of wanting to make sure that whatever standard is, is applied, is applied universally across, um, across districts. So we can, we can look at a little bit more at that, but I think what we need from the commission is sort of the direction of yes, you'd like folks to be able to utilize these existing structures or uh, no, you want them to have to meet setbacks in order to, to have an accessory unit.
No, I, I think, can we do, can we add that to the special permit process that we did to the front?
Yeah, we can, we can talk through what that might look like, um, as, as long, we just have to write it in a broad enough way that it doesn't look like the commission is granting variances to any standard within the regulation. So we'll, we'll give you some, some potential language for that.
Can I follow up a little bit more on, on, on Karen's point with regard to the letter? Apologies, my son had his wedding over the weekend and my voice is, is gone. But the point about the, the letter and the um the distance from a non-conforming structure to an adjacent um house. I'd like to suggest that if we consider that, that we use double the distance, so it, so if I'm in R twenty and it's a twenty-foot side yard, that means my neighbor's house can be no closer than forty feet from me. Could we make it so that the non-conforming structure still has to be forty feet at the closest point to the neighbor's house? That would sort of give you the equivalent without preventing someone with a non-conformity um from being able to make an ADU. And the second point I would want to make is, is again, I, I support Ken's perspective that I really wouldn't want a non-conforming building to grow its footprint up. So its footprint is the same, but to have it higher. And maybe you have an exception for um a floodplain area where you, where you're required basically to get that extra few feet, but otherwise, no, no additional. I just, I think that a non-conformity is already challenging being on a prop, close to a property line and to allow that to not, to, to be there and grow upwards is in some ways adding insult to injury to the neighbor. Thanks.
Okay, uh, rest your voice here. Um, I got a couple, a couple of things I'd like to point out. Uh, relative to uh, uh, what you were talking about uh with, with the distance of a, of an ADU to the adjacent properties residents. Uh, I think we got to be careful that we're not hindering the ability of the neighbor to add on to their house, which might end up being still within setbacks, but closer to the ADU. So I think, you know, it's using, using an adjacent properties house location gets to be a little, a little tricky. Um, um, in terms of, of, you know, requiring, requiring the distance based upon that. So I think, you know, we'll take a look at it, but I just want to be, you know, you know, clear that everybody understands that, you know, we don't want this, we don't you really can't be hindering the ability of a, of a neighbor to add on.
How about, is the commission okay with having them come up with language to maybe try to write it broad enough so we can add it to the special permit process?
I, I think I'd support that.
Ken, Vic?
I mean, yeah, I'm definitely okay with the special permit um process as well. Again, I, you know, just, I mean, I don't mind if, if the conformity staying within what's already there, expanding in any way, shape or form, I think would be, uh, I'm, I'm not in favor of that. The non-conformity. But all, all the other stuff we had talked about, I think are good ideas.
Well, if we're, if we're okay with not changing the footprint or going up, we don't even need the special permit process. Right? We just, if, if we have enough commission members that are in support of just having it as long as the footprint doesn't change and it doesn't go up. Right, we can just.
Well, I think, like, I think what Abby was saying too, I, I know, you know, the only, I kind of understand the point about the flood zone because they have that issue both in Saybrook and in Old Line down in the, all those cottages down there. So their, their zoning regulations don't allow, you know, their, their, their maximum height is twenty-four feet above, you know, uh, uh, for the, for the house. But because the FEMA flood zone is, you know, they got to be twelve feet above. So they're, they're asking for variances for all those homes out there. So I can, I can appreciate what Abby was saying about the exception for the, the flood zone. I, I just don't know that I would want to grant an accessory dwelling unit. If it's a primary unit, that's what, primary residence, that's one thing, but the accessory, I don't know that we should start granting or getting involved in changing anything on the property. I guess, you know, and the other thing we had talked about was the, you know, the hundred and fifty-foot square foot uh poolhouse that somebody converts into a, you know, a unit or a shed or something like that. That, I mean, that is possible and those are allowed within ten feet of the property line, so. I mean, those are the other things that we'd have to think about.
If a zoning compliance permit came across the zoning official's desk to, to convert an accessory unit and, and there was, and, and as long, and we have the provision as long as the non-conformity isn't increased that, that we don't, we have no issue here. The height could still go up under current regulations because the way that the zoning regulations currently read is that that provision for the height extension is the standard in the floodplain. And so, so in that section of the regulations, um, permits would be issued unless there's special language added here. Permits would be issued and, and the extension of the height or the, the increase of height would not be considered an extension of non-conformity.
In a floodplain.
In a floodplain only, yeah.
I guess the thing I could, I could see, I could see a problem with, you know, the, the neighbor, it's across the street and granted, they don't necessarily have a right to a view. But I can see that being an issue where the neighbor across the street that's always had a view and next thing you know, the guy's got a shed. He goes up two stories and now it blocks his view. And now you're going to have neighbors fighting neighbors um in that sense. So I, I could see that potential happening. So I would just go back to saying, you know, any, any non-conformity, regardless of it's in a flood zone, no, no increase in any non-conformity for, for an ADU. That's where I guess I would stand.
Well, I, I, I do have an issue with that in the flood zone because then they wouldn't be able to do it. Right?
But again, goes back to my argument at the name, I mean, you know, you, you could build a a structure that's now gonna, guys had a view for, from his property and next thing you know, because the shed went up two stories, now he can't see the water, but I, I realize it's not his right, but people have expectation regardless of whether, whether there's a right there or not.
I mean, one, one middle ground could be to um make sure that the accessory still maintains the height provisions of accessory structures rather than, um, you know, the primary thirty-five feet or, you know, you know, sort of, or twenty-five, you know, or twenty feet, you know, we could sort of say, okay, it's got to be in the fifteen-foot range. You don't get to go to the same height you would if you were being, building, you know, your single family home. Um, so we could try to reduce it that way and try to mitigate a little bit.
As measured from the flood.
Right, right. It would still be, it would still be up. Um, the other thing we can do is just kind of a, you know, sort of a few examples of, of areas where, and then sort of what those heights might look like for folks, um, you know, kind of what the BFE plus, um, the, the accessory unit height requirements. And we can give you a, you know, sort of a better sense of what that looks like, or, you know, if we're talking about, you know, forty properties with, you know, that potential versus, you know, we're talking about two properties where there might actually be an issue. So we can try to again, do some scenario stuff, but I think if the, if the intent is to keep the non-conforming structures um as close to their current configuration as possible, then, then I think we can work with that to get you some, some language.
I'm just concerned if we start allowing those structures to be built to the flood standard, th- then you're talking a whole different at a whole different level of construction, because if, you know, you, there, you're going to be on piles, you're gonna, I mean, it's, you're basically building a brand new brand new structure at that point to, to bring it up to flood code, so, you know, that's where I guess I, I take exception to it, but so I kind of go, I, I'd like to see if we could do something like that. I mean, that'd be great. The idea that you had there.
Wh- which was what?
Well, basically not allowing it to be built up into current standard under, just current FEMA standards. It would be just, you know, I guess, the, I guess you could raise it, but not the full, the full height, I guess, above.
What, yeah, what we, what we would say is that an accessory dwelling unit um cannot exceed the height requirement for an accessory structure.
Right.
Right, unless, unless they already have that height, you know, built in. But if you said that accessory units have to meet the um accessory height provisions um for, you know, for pre-existing non-conforming structures. We could talk about what that might look like.
What, what is that height?
Remember fifteen?
That's fifteen feet, yeah.
So one more question on this. Currently in our, our draft, it says that the accessory can't be taller than the principal. In this case, wouldn't that be happening?
Yes.
So I guess part of me is wondering if we're going to run into, you know, people who don't live on the water saying, well, how come he gets to do it? You know?
I think, I think being, being in a, in a FEMA flood zone um and putting, putting living, uh, you know, um, having, having living area in a FEMA flood zone, uh, you're required to go on. Um, otherwise, initial permit anyway.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, if you're putting your accessory unit up, does it open the door that the principal should also be in compliance with the FEMA flood, but that means lifting a house and that's a whole other nightmare, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have the rights to require a, you know, a structure.
It's only when you like start to do a remodel that they can impose the like, nope, are you going to comply?
Right, if you're a fifty percent of the value of the, the assessed value of the home.
Yeah.
Do you know what you want to guess for language, Abby?
So what, what we're working on is the principle that yes, you want accessory units to be usable without having to meet additional um, you know, setback issues if they exist already and are, are, you know, pre-existing non-conforming. Um, that's okay, they can be used in that. What we need to do is create some language that provides some controls relative to height, because that's the part that could be extended without having a non-conformity extension. And so, you know, you know, not expanding a, a pre-existing non-conforming is, is, is super simple. It's the, um, it's the height conversation. And so whether we look at that, um, via special permit or what, you know, because again, we're looking at what rights people already have in the zoning regulations under the flood section and wanting to make sure. So it, it may be that, you know, yay for folks, um, you know, we're going to say, you know, accessories can't be built up to the height of the um of, of the single-family home standard, they have to still stick with that fifteen feet. But if you're in the floodplain, like, like if you were to redo your house, you get that bump. Um, and maybe if we kind of talk about what that bump looks like across, you know, various flood, floodplains and, and neighborhoods, um, that might be, might be helpful to kind of tell, you know, help you understand, you know, what we're, what we're talking about, because remember it's, um, it's above base flood elevation and depending on where the adjacent grade is, you know, that, you know, that, that may vary. Um, it could only be a couple of feet, it could be seven feet, so, um.
We can take a look at that. We can see, we can, we can determine what accessory structures currently exist within, within a FEMA flood zone. And then we know what the grade is, we know what the base flood elevation is for that, so yeah, we can come up with something.
Well, would you have to say somebody wanted to put an accessory structure in, say, a garage within a FEMA flood zone, they'd be allowed to do that?
Correct? That's right, that's because there's no
Right, that's right. That's because there's no, there's no living, living arrangements within the garage.
But then they could subsequently make it an accessory dwelling unit and then they would have to raise it up or, or whatever we come up with here.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this stuff, you know, in the floodplain specifically, the expense and, and the, the requirements may be prohibitive for most of the folks. In those scenarios. So that, that could certainly um, be a limiting factor for many folks. Um.
I would, I would respectfully disagree. If you're living on the water, you can afford, you could probably afford to do whatever you want for the most part. Um, but yeah, I, I, I agree. If we could take a look at some of these scenarios, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, so the last issue we have is the, the, the last sentence here, more than one ADU.
Right, so.
I think, I think it's clearly no more than one detached. The issue is, is what happens when you have an, and when you have an attached one already. Um, should be a lot for a detached and, and I would say, I would say yes, absolutely. Because. If you've already take, the, the problem is you've already taken advantage of what you do, but now you're going to be hurt. Because you would have done it to the previous regulations, size, et cetera. And you're not going to be able to take advantage of the new regulations if you're not allowed to have a detached one.
I would agree. And I would just, I know we had brought this up another time too. But. Oh, no, 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 I would, I would agree with what Greg's saying.
Would we be looking at, if you have, if you have an accessory apartment already in the house? And you want to put up a detached um, ADU, would you be considering the square footage of the entire house, including the accessory apartment? In determining your maximum size for your EDU? Or take that accessory apartment square footage out of the mix and just your principal use square footage?
I think it's the size of the building because isn't that the point of the, isn't that the point of the limitation so that it? That it looks right and it looks accessory and it looks. Uh, subordinate and I don't think it matters what they're doing inside. I mean, it could all be closets, it could be. Unfinished space, it could be whatever, it could be unfinished attic, it could be a finished attic. I mean, it could be an ADU, who knows? I think it's the size of the, I think it's the size of the whole building.
One question I'd have is um. Whether this, that, this provision would be available to all properties or if we only enable it over a certain acreage. Um. I'm thinking in some of the smaller lot neighborhoods, if you've got. An accessory in the basement and then you've got a small, you can have, you know, to code, a hundred and twenty square feet would be, you know, a very efficiency sort of style unit, but you could have it. Um, and then you put a three hundred square foot piece, you could have, you know, three separate units on, on a single family parcel. Um, and so something to think about in terms of, of the, the under five acre properties. What that effect might be where, where folks are a little bit closer to one another. Um, and if that's, if that's the intent of this, or if the intent is to say, listen, where you have. Um, you get, you get one or the other on the smaller parcels, but where you have more land and there really isn't an impact to folks. Um. You know, that's, that's where the, the provision for one of each would come into play.
Well, again, I don't think it goes to the, the use of the building so much as the size. So if they have one. In there and they could, whether it was an ADU or not, they could still get a, a, an accessory one, they should still be able to get an accessory one.
Then it almost turns into a three family unit type situation.
Well, it is, but i- it might, but it's, but the only difference, Ken, is you're just. Someone who owns a larger piece of land is going to be able to do it. Someone who doesn't, isn't going to be able to. I don't, I don't, you know, I mean, I don't see that. I don't see why we should distinguish between those.
You know, I think the only issue is the intensity and density of uses um, in the smaller neighborhoods, right? That, that's, that's the reason I bring it up.
Oh, would the park requirement impact this? With a small lot and you have to require parking for each of the units? That would limit.
It could.
Help to do it, right?
It could, it'll be on a sort of a lot by lot basis, but it could.
Are we able to grandfather anybody who has one? As well, so that people aren't putting in two new ones? Or if that's an issue for anyone?
Yeah, I mean, you, you could put something in that said, you know, uh, for those, for properties. Where an accessory unit attached or detached is in existence at the time of this. You know, of the, of the adoption of this regulation, you won't be penalized. Um, you, you know, you can't have. More than three in total, but you won't be penalized, you know, for your, for your other, you can't, you know.
For your present one.
I think that would be good language to add.
And what that would do would be, again, it's only for those preexisting folks. Um. If somebody in the future then wanted to, you can have kind of one or the other right now, you, you, so if somebody comes in and says, well, I want to convert my basement and I want to convert my pool house. Um, those folks might be in the future not able, not able to, to have both.
I don't know, I guess I would be okay with leaving it open for a, any of the, any, any house that can. Handle all the requirements. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Okay, you have everything you guys need?
I think you've got plenty to work with.
Yeah, the nice, the nice thing with this one is, you know, folks, the commission isn't under a particular deadline, but there are people out there who are. You know, sort of waiting on the commission to render some decisions so they can make choices about their properties. So. Um, we will come back for, um, and the next meeting is, is a P O C D meeting, but for the November meeting. We'll get your stuff well in advance so we can kind of hash through these. We'll do an updated draft that we think reflects. The direction that you've given tonight. Um, and then hopefully move us a little bit closer so that, you know, things can.
Yeah, we, we'd like to get started on it and, and moving, but we want to get it right. So hopefully we can do it timely for everyone and, and get it right too.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, next item is um, the discussion of. Potential amendments regarding cannabis. So we need to decide if this is. Acceptable language to advertise for public hearing, right? Seth? That we have to do?
Yeah, we laid out a, a timeframe for you. Um, the public hearing would be on November fifteenth and then the, the regulation here is very straightforward. It's um. It goes, you know, basically references back to state statutes, may be amended for the various cannabis establishments and effectively bans them all. Except for those um, that are currently allowed under the dispensary piece in the medical campus overlay. Um, so that's kind of the direction that we took at the last meeting and, and like we said, this is really, it's pretty straightforward. Um, and. Would be, um, if you're okay tonight, we'd do the paperwork to receive at the October twenty fifth meeting. Um, advertise for the hearing November first through the eighth and hold the hearing on the fifteenth of November. Again, you're trying to, to hopefully be able to make a decision either at that meeting or it leaves you one meeting in December. Um, to go forward and still have some window for the appeal period for the December seventeenth um, deadline.
Okay. Everybody's position still from the last meeting?
Yes, I want to say.
Yep.
Okay, so. Karen, you're saying something?
No, yeah, I'm.
Okay, all right. So that's it for that one. So you're going to advertise that, right?
We're going to prepare the application materials to officially start the formal process for next meeting. Um, and then it will advertise at the beginning of November.
Okay. Uh, next item is number five correspondence. Do we have any other than the letter from the Dunn, what you're done?
Yeah, no, that's it.
That's it, okay. And um. Commission business discussion of the twenty twenty three planning is on a commission meeting schedule. Anybody have an issue with that? Who's, who's, who's trying to talk? Is that Karen?
Yes, it's Karen. Um, we have a meeting scheduled for February fourteenth and while that's not a big deal for me, I'm wondering if that might. If we have a hearing.
Yeah, probably should, uh. We could bring a cake for, for Victor. But other than that, yeah, we probably should maybe move that one. Karen, you're, you, we can't hear you, Karen.
Is that April eleventh might be an issue for me, but.
Is that school break in April eleventh on that?
It is.
Yes, that would probably be an issue for myself as well.
Me too.
Okay, well, we still have time to act on these. Um. We, the uh. The calendar needs to be filed by uh, December tenth, uh, one month before our first scheduled meeting on, in twenty twenty three.
Why don't we do February seven and April? April four?
That works for me.
April four? April four, okay.
Yeah.
That good?
Yeah, yeah, if you go the fourth, you're just going to have one, you'll have three in a row. I mean, no, I'm sorry. You'll, you'll have two in a row, the twenty eighth and the fourth. Just as long as, you know.
Yeah, well, if we go to the eighteenth, we'll have the eighteen, twenty fifth. So, you know, we can't really escape one there.
Or the other, right, right, right.
In February, we'll still have two weeks. So that's good, but we don't have that option in April.
Right.
Everybody okay with the schedule changing to February seventh and April fourth?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that. Any discussion of uh, ongoing projects, upcoming projects? Abby or Mark?
Having been out for a couple of weeks, I don't have anything new. Mark, has there been anything that you want to update the commission on?
Um, no, um, nothing new. Uh, just kind of give you guys an update. The, the handles um, subdivision on Great Neck Road. Um, it's been signed and we're still waiting for the applicant to file, uh, to file that on the land records. Um, other than that, nothing new.
Okay, great, that's it. Um, motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
But I didn't make it. So Ken made the motion.
I'll second, yes.
All in favor? Great, one hour is back, so perfect.
All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Good night all, have a great night. Sorry I was late.
No problem, Bert.